Workshop meeting for November first, twenty twenty-three with our agenda. Uh, we'll start with our agenda, tax collector swearing in with the honorable mayor, Mary Ann Gerard presenting.
I'll just skip that.
Just kidding.
People leave me in the shot.
Okay, yeah. If you could, please, you're a hero on the bottom, raise your body, hold on. You have to meet. I'm Reese Snyder.
I'm Reese Snyder.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution.
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And then I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Speech, speech. No, you don't have to say. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
For coming. Appreciate that. All right, so we'll have a call order and a roll call.
President Ferguson.
Here.
Vice President Gerard.
Here.
Councilmember Fagan.
Here.
Councilmember Cresser.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Mayor Gerard.
Here.
Junior Councilperson Leader.
Here.
Borough Manager Snyder.
Here.
Borough Solicitor Harper.
Here.
All right, we'll start with item one, approval to, approval of the meeting agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? For the November first, twenty twenty-three workshop meeting.
Second.
I get motion from Councilwoman Cresser, a second from Councilman Gerard. Any questions, changes, or amendments to the agenda? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Or none? All right, item two, public input. If there's anyone from the public that would want to stand and uh state anything, please stand and and uh say your name and address. I think the only other person who's not known right here is uh is uh Marie, so I don't think she has anything to say. So if not, we'll go on to item three announcements.
Next council meeting, November fifteenth, regular meeting at seven P M. In council chambers. Hurrock is scheduled to meet Wednesday, November fifteenth at eight A M. In council chambers. The Hatfield Museum Historical Society is scheduled to meet on Tuesday, November twenty-first at seven P M. At the Hatfield Borough Office here in council chambers. The borough offices will be closed Friday, November tenth. In observance of Veterans Day and Thursday and Friday, November twenty-third and twenty-fourth, in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. The next planning commission meeting originally scheduled for December second. At seven P M. Here in council chambers is being rescheduled for Monday, December eleventh at six P M. Here in council chambers. And leaf bag pickup will continue every Monday through December fourth. Please have your bags to the curb by the morning.
And what was the reason for the reschedule of the planning meeting?
Um, because members could not make it, so we pushed it back. Uh, it was canceled for this month because there was lack of business. And then on the second, some planning commission members could not make it, so they asked if we could reschedule for the eleventh.
Okay, but there is business to cover.
Uh, yes, and uh we will be talking about the twenty twenty-four meeting dates if that is, if nothing comes in and is presented to the planning commission.
Okay. All right, any questions for the manager? If not, we'll go to item four, reports from standing committees and the mayor. First, we'll do budget, finance, and labor. Um, so I'd like to announce that the BFL committee did meet today. Uh, we went through the budget again, um, and I have to commend uh the, our manager and her, her um her folks who worked on the budget because they've done a great job. Um, we're gonna, oh, sorry. Um, I'm not gonna repeat all that. But no, do wanna say thank you to Jamie and her team for, for all the hard work and efforts. I know Rich and I were grilling them on it pretty heavily at times. Um, and uh I think sometimes we play good cop, bad cop, where you're the good cop, Rich, and I'm the bad cop, it seems like, so. Yeah, I know. Hard to believe, right? Um, but no, they did a great job, and from a positive aspect, there are no revenue increases, no taxes, no, no, no increases of that kind. No fee increases for the upcoming year, so. So I think we're planning, or not that I think, next week we'll plan on presenting it to the public and the rest of council, and um we'll have an open discussion next uh in two weeks on it, so. Any questions? All right. And I must say too, Steve is actually happy after that discussion, so that was a good start, so. All right, no questions, we'll go on to planning, building, and zoning.
Committee has not met, so I have nothing new to report.
Okay. Public safety?
The committee has not met, so we don't have anything major to report.
Yeah. Public works?
Uh, the committee has not met since mine has reported, so.
Utilities?
Uh, our committee has not met, but I do have one thing that that we are looking at, or will be looking at as a result of the gentleman, Mr. DeVos, who's here at the previous meeting last time. Um, we are going to be making a strong effort through a new program that we're gonna be trying to institute to get people to sign up for electronic billing to save costs on our mailing and billing expenses, and that'll be uh coming along further, and we'll be giving more details as we get this flushed out.
Sounds like a great plan. Any questions? All right, if not, we'll go to the Hurrock.
Uh, Hurrock has not met recently because it was a new business, however. We, I believe we may have a new candidate to take the place of uh Johnny Casanta, who has just left us recently, so I would be pursuing this with the gentleman and give more details about it if he uh if he decides he'd like to come on board.
Any questions? There are none, we'll go on to Madam Mayor.
Really have nothing new to report.
Okay. All right. We'll go on to item five, uh reports and correspondence, uh monthly investment report.
Monthly investment report and the cash report was included in your packets this evening, just highlighting uh for year-to-date uh twenty twenty-three. Electric uh in our investments continues to thrive, um capital reserve, sewer capital reserve, and sewer managed. You know, uh, a little bit in the, in the red, but um nothing compared to what we saw in uh twenty twenty-two. As we move forward um to our T-bills, you can see um Diane did leave the six month for the electric and the six month for the sewer managed, just so you can see what we walked away with, which we talked about last meeting, roughly uh fifty-six hundred for the six-month electric and fifty-seven hundred for the six-month sewer managed and budget, finance, and labor. Uh, didn't want to reinvest those, so they are back up for six months, and they will mature um in March of twenty twenty-four.
Any questions? All right, how about uh EIT and LST?
EIT and LST reports were in your packets. For EIT, uh year-to-date total, we are at four oh one, seven ninety-four, which is an increase from last year of the three seventy-two nineteen. Uh, November is a good month for EIT, November and December for us, so hopefully um we'll make up uh some ground and continue moving forward and get to that four ninety-one mark where we were last year um at the end of twenty twenty-two. And for LST, year-to-date total, we're at forty-four, nine thirty, and last year we were at uh thirty-six, six forty-four. Budget, finance, and labor did look at these numbers, and there is an increase in revenue noted in the budget this year that will be presented um on the fifteenth.
And just to note, it wasn't a full offset, we, they were conservative in their estimate of that, of what we'd make for next year, so. Any questions? All right, monthly year-to-date?
Monthly year-to-date was in your packets through September thirtieth. As you can see, um we are roughly for revenues and expenses, uh fifty-seven percent revenues, fifty-six percent expenses. And um September was high in both revenues and expenses compared to other months. Um, we had the fire relief money in and out, the pension money in and out. Um, we also made some payments for wastewater bills, so that's why it's roughly over six thousand versus, you know, sometimes we're more five, four.
Any questions? Oh, monthly hearing, excuse me, monthly zoning and hearing board? Applications?
There are no new applications at this time.
Okay. How about the police department report?
The hiring update, uh we're working on backgrounds for applicants, we have to be able to offer two initial offers on November fifteenth, and it's going well, we have two buyers as Jbar first at the roster, and then we'll start it all over again. Hopefully two more positions being added next year, and we'll bring our roster up to thirty-one, which is the highest of these forms in the best.
I will just add, thank you for being available last night during Halloween. Um, I ran into Officer Kidlin, great, my kids were super excited. I know kids were running towards the police car when the, you know, they're giving out Sour Patch Full Size Sour Patch, so I'm super excited. Um, I ran since I happened to be in the township, but I know they were available in the borough as well, so just thank you, and thank Chief as well. Absolutely, the officers enjoyed doing that.
Any questions for the lieutenant? If not, we'll go to fire department report.
Fire department report was in your packets. Um, I will just highlight a few things for, and Butch can uh answer any questions as he's available in the audience. Um, for um total calls, seventy-four, that was down a little bit from twenty twenty-two in the third quarter, and they were at eighty-one. It might be which boxes they're put on and uh calls you're assisting or responding to. Um, also wanted to highlight that um year-to-date, um in twenty twenty-three, their response time is four minutes and twenty-eight seconds, which is down from last year at four minutes and fifty-seven seconds, so just wanna highlight that's an awesome response time, and thank you for you guys to get into the calls in a timely manner.
We're having a slower year, call-wise in general. At least we are. Unless we put in like another hundred calls in the next two months, we're gonna be lower than we have been for a while, so. And just like I say, thanks for uh for our reps that came out to our house last Tuesday. Appreciate that.
Yeah, no, that was a great time. I think the kids, everyone I saw loved it, you know, the fire hose in the back and uh the fire extinguisher in the front, I mean, just seeing the joy on kids to to have a fire hose and spray it, so. I didn't know it'd be that much fun, but hey, so. And and uh all the teams, your guys, everyone that was there from the other houses were all polite, courteous, just, they were all happy to be there. It was, that was a great. To me, that was a great showing that everyone was happy to be there and work with the kids and families. Yeah.
Do enough of them.
Yeah. So you're saying you wanna have one a month, right?
We used to do public suppers every month or every quarter.
Yeah.
Um, you know, do those get more? Between costs going up and attendance going down, they just were not working worth any effort anymore.
Something I wanna think about. Okay. Maybe a couple times a year or something. All right. Any questions with Butch? All right, if not EMS?
There was no EMS report included in your packets this month.
All right. How about any public works updates?
Uh, pretty standard October, as far as what we did in public works, nothing really outrageous. Um curbside chipping was completed and first round of leaf bag pickups was done this Monday. So plenty more leaf bag pickups next month and first Monday in December. Uh, I will note that in case anybody sees, snowflakes went up today. They're not plugged in.
No, what did they go on?
Uh, day before Thanksgiving. So the twenty-second.
My uh, my girls both said uh now that Halloween's done, it's Christmas time. I'm like, no, it's not, so.
Jason, I was ready to start putting them up last week, and I decide I can't do it before Halloween. Morally, I can't do it. I have to wait until after Halloween.
The funny thing is, my wife was very enthusiastic. She's like, I've raised them well. They wanna celebrate Christmas right after Halloween. I'm like, this isn't a good thing, honey. Anyway, not that I need to be recorded, and she'll see this, so. So, okay, um, oh, I was gonna ask Steve, uh with the, with the lawn bag, with the bag pickups, right? Do the waste management companies, do the, do the waste companies know about it? Because waste management stopped picking up mine a couple of weeks back, and I'm wondering if they know that we do that, so now they've stopped. Maybe for this time period, I'm speculating.
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I know when we would do our Christmas tree pickup, um, the trash truck drivers would actually stop us and ask us. You guys pick these up, or are we supposed to take them? When they ask us, we say, no, no, you take them. So, but I, I don't know about the trash companies and and what they do.
Okay, I didn't know if it was a pattern, if anyone else maybe had noticed that, so it might just be mine, it might just be my local guy, but, okay. All right, any questions for Steve? All right, if not, we'll go on to the engineering report.
Trash report was included in your packets. There aren't really many updates in his report from last month, no new land development updates. Uh, we just continue to work on the Broad Street Storm Sewer and North Main Street Storm and Sanitary Sewer Project, the big utility replacement project for next year. Um, kinda dotting all our i's and crossing all our t's, getting all our paperwork in. You'll see um a cost-sharing agreement with North Penn Water Authority on for discussion this evening. So um we're really hoping to get all, everything together, so we can go out to bid um at the beginning of the year and then have a shovel on the ground um spring.
Any questions? All right. Any, uh, the zoning officer and building code reports?
The zoning officer's report was in your packet. Just wanted to highlight, it's with him and the fire marshal that the twenty twenty-three fire uh inspections are being scheduled, and they're currently um seventy-nine percent of the total inspections have been initiated. So that means they've gone out at least to do the first round. That's not saying that anybody failed, and they would have to go back, but seventy-nine percent of um the businesses in the borough or the rentals in the borough have been, at least had an initial inspection. And that's good for twenty twenty-three because we are just catching up from COVID. We just caught up at the beginning of the year from the two years that we did not complete the inspections for COVID, so from maybe January, February to now, seventy-nine percent is, is, is pretty good.
Well, I noticed there is a violation of the chicken. Is that our first of violation?
Yes, um, that there was a supposed rooster or cockadoodle doing in on Roosevelt. That's what people were saying online. I think Steve heard as well when he was out at Bennett's Court. They received uh just kind of an education letter. It wasn't a violation. It was just, hey, did you know we passed this ordinance? You are allowed to have chickens, just not roosters. The gentleman did come in, uh spoke to David because Bob wasn't here, and he stated he does not have a rooster. He only has females, and he's scheduled to come back in and talk to Bob. Um, if he has anything, he still has to get a permit, so there's still some violation there, but we're trying to treat it kind of like the cats we did at first, just like an educational letter, like, just so you know, we pass these ordinances, this is how you become in compliance.
Oh, and speaking of that, we talked before about electric vehicles and uh residents who may not have applied for those permits.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have an update on that, or?
Um, yeah, we're just tracking a list. I added the uh property that you gave. I checked with Bob. There were no additional ones. We did put um I believe on our website, but definitely on social media, we created a flyer. Um, if you, hey, are you thinking about going E V? If you wanna go E V., let the borough know, because as your utility, we have to make sure our infrastructure is able to handle that. And did you know you need a permit if you're gonna put a charger in your station at your house? So we kinda hit two birds with one stone by doing that. We did create a flyer for social media and the website.
Okay, and then after a while, we'll, if people haven't come in, we'll start sending notices as well?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, if there's no other questions, uh any updates from fire marshal's safety? Fire safety inspector?
No, no updates besides the
Oh, sorry, just
This is seventy-nine percent.
Yeah. Sorry. Uh, any updates from pool advisory?
Uh, no.
All right. There's no questions on, any other questions on reports and correspondence? We'll go on to the manager's report.
My report was included in your packets. Um, same with Chad. I don't have any land use and development updates um at this time from my past um report. Utility billing, just wanna bring to your attention that shut-offs did occur in October. Now we're going into uh the winter months, but we certainly will monitor electric bills. We have been working with residents who are struggling, offering them help and support services through um either law heeb or pastors' funds. So there are some residents that are going into the winter months that need some help, so we have been making contacts um with those. Wanted to highlight on um the twenty twenty-two outstanding project updates for the utility replacement project. Uh, Chad and I are working with Congressman Fitzpatrick's office on additional funding. We were alerted that there could possibly be some funding available for us for a project from two thousand and seven that we never capitalized on, and we could possibly allocate those funds to the utility replacement project for um West Broad, East Broad, and North Main Street. So I filled out the application with Chad. We did a bunch of detail. We broke down the budget, and we sent it to Congressman Fitzpatrick's office. Um he's working on moving that forward to see if we can get some additional funding for that project. As you know, we're still waiting on the grants for the P A Small Water and the H two O, hoping to hear um at the November meeting. And other than that, no um other updates, if there are any specific questions.
All right, if not, we'll go on to item seven, new businesses discussion items, uh twenty twenty-four meeting dates.
The draft twenty twenty-four meeting dates were included in your packet for discussion this evening. Just wanted to draw your attention to uh September. So as you know, Steve and I go to P M E A uh the first week in September, so we are out. We normally hold the September workshop meeting in August. Unfortunately, the way the month falls, we have a meeting scheduled for the twenty-first. We would be back again, meeting the twenty-eighth, which is the following week. So um in this draft, it was proposed for discussion amongst council. If we wanted to continue the same schedule as we do for the summer, so in June, July, and August, we have one meeting. We would have one meeting, which would be the workshop regular meeting in September, but we would move our strategic plan to a separate day. Instead of coming in and having our strategic planning starting at five, and then we meet, and then maybe we meet again after the meeting, and it's a really long day, having a whole separate day for the strategic plan, which is also a public meeting. Um, that's just kind of brainstorming to be able to get um the meetings in. It's open for discussion. If anybody has any conflicts with the council dates, I personally know the planning commission is going to be discussing their meeting dates at their next meeting along with the proposal of going to uh six o'clock P M. Instead of seven o'clock P M. Start time. Just open for discussion.
Are these all good, say?
They are, yes.
So not much is changing.
No, it just happens to be the way August falls with the third uh Wednesday being on the twenty-first, the following is the twenty-eighth, which you would move your workshop meeting up normally, but that's just one week away, so there's not a time. I think we've kinda run into the past. We've been noticing also, we don't really have a lot, a lot of reports in by August because they don't give it to us till at least the first, if not after, so just switching things up, it's how you feel. There's no law um that you have to meet twice a month. That's just what Hatfield Borough has always done, except in the summer. So that's kinda why we suggested maybe leaving September as one to do your workshop regular together, but taking that strategic planning out and making it something a little bit more detailed than it is, maybe more of a deeper dive into the committees and
Dive, maybe town hall.
Yes, yes. I think it would benefit if we had more public engagement in our strategic planning. Because that's what, that's what we're here for, to hear feedback from them, to put that in a budget, to do projects that they would like to do to improve the community.
Okay.
So I think we can get something and put it on its own day. I think it could be a more valuable tool for us.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I would say too, if we could do it more where there's an online presence, where people, if they don't physically come in, they can make comments online, email questions, or, you know, or even be joined, yeah. We'll put out some more public notice of what's going on and and try and get more attendance here for that, I think.
Yeah.
Okay. Great, great. Uh, I don't have any issues um with the dates. I, I think what you're proposing September is a good idea, so I'm okay with that.
And I don't picture us to adopt this till December, so there's still time. If people have conflicts or things come up, please let us know. Again, planning commission isn't gonna be talking, I mean, they, until December about our dates anyway, same with um Hurrock. If Rich, if you or the committee see any conflicts or um let us know. We can certainly change anything before it's approved and advertised.
All right, doesn't sound like there's any questions? So we'll go on to item B, Christmas tree lighting. Your request.
The um Grease Lutheran Church is working to continue the tradition that the Hatfield Chamber of Commerce started. The annual Christmas tree lighting will be held on December second at six thirty P M. They are requesting the use of Rower Plaza. They had stated in the letter that it, the event's gonna kick off at five P M. At Grease. They'll have refreshments games. The Boy Scouts will be there, same as last year. Everyone will hang out for about an hour and then head down to see um Santa and Christmas caroling at Rower Plaza. So this is just on for discussion this evening and um on for consideration. It will be at the November meeting. I will add, they wrote it in inclement weather, uh the tree will be let uh lit virtually from Grace, they have a fellowship hall, so I think the chamber did that before, too. Kind of, we stood at the firehouse and watched it from afar. Yeah.
Now we're saying clement weather, is that rain, or is that's heavy snow, or?
Yeah, um, I'm sure, I think, I think it could be either. I know that it rained last year, like, at least previously to the event, but they still held it outside, yeah.
Okay.
And I, I would assume that they would, and I can communicate what a timeline would be to announce that. If that would be a decision, would they announce it by four o'clock that day, so we can certainly share on social media as well?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can talk to Peggy about that in the Heart Committee at Grease.
Okay. And I know Steve, based on some discussions we have tonight, he's really worried about snow, um so, you know, just happening immediately, so. It's an inside joke, but it's
Plows are getting put on tonight. I have guys already coming in on it for time to do it.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's about some of his budget items that he got, so. And the whole phrase about hell freezing over, so that's why he's getting prepared now for it, so. All right, if there's no questions, we'll go on to the North Penn Water Authority, uh in a governmental uh cooperative cost-sharing group.
Okay, this one's my value, Rick. If you go back to Chad's letter, the very first project that is described there is the Broad and Main replacement of the sanitary sewer system and replacement of the North Penn Water Authority water system in that area. It's a huge project, and we are waiting for a grant from the Commonwealth Financing Agency. We haven't heard about it yet, but that's what we're working on. But since we can do this together, we're hoping it will save money if we bid it together. And so the agreement is basically an agreement between the borough and the North Penn Water Authority, and they already approved it. The engineers came up with the agreement, so builders just broke down, you know, and it basically would give Hatfield Borough the lead in bidding it out and and choosing, you know, the right bid and things like that, but then they would pay for their share of the project, and we would pay for our share of the project. So it should be both more efficient to get it done with them. And secondly, they'll, they'll pay for theirs, we'll pay for ours, hopefully with a grant, and it'll work out better. So all, all that is, and and I have talked to uh Paul Mullin, who was an Earl resident, and uh right, and he is the solicitor for the North Penn Water Authority. He told me they already approved it, subject to your opinion. So, maybe with some regular meeting, unless somebody's got an issue or problem with it.
And we're clear, right? So the payments are held separately, not we, we pay it all, then someone pays us back. We pay everything separate.
No, the way it, it comes down to how you bid. Um, North Penn agrees to pay Hatfield the total sum required for completion. North Penn's work detailed in the project specs payable within thirty days from the date the invoices are submitted by Hatfield to North Penn, so as soon as we get an invoice, we should send it to them.
Okay, and we'll get payment from within thirty days.
Right, and then actually, um unless something's changed radically, I think the North Penn Water Authority has the money. Yeah, they're, they're a pretty large water authority, serving um nine or nine and fifteen total municipal Pretty large water authority, serving um nine, nine to fifteen total municipal systems, I wish you're getting the exact number. At least have Ken Farrell on the board.
Yeah.
He's still.
Okay, so I'm pretty sure that they will both pay and that they will have the money to pay.
That was my only question.
Right, so if we don't do the project if we don't get the Commonwealth Financing grant. Because that's key also. What can I do then, we are, we have the money? Shh, don't tell anybody any higher story.
No.
Or are we, okay, so we don't have, or we're gonna have to do the project, because here's the other thing, the big picture issue is. Um when sewer pipes get old, you have an infiltration inflow problem. The rainwater gets into the pipe, it runs down into the plant, it overloads the plant, and then we are using more than our paid-for capacity in the Hatfield Township plant. So we have to fix it. We've been doing. You know, work like this for years in, in the borough, but our system's older, and so we have to do this to get it done.
So that'll be on for the next. Meeting?
Yeah, that'll be on for consideration at the regular meeting.
Okay.
So if anybody has a question between now and then, just phone me now.
All right. If there are any other questions, uh we'll go to old business, if there are any changes, any updates? Okay. Uh action items, we don't have any action items tonight either as well. So, do we have some one final question? Do we have any uh, any need for an executive session?
Uh we do, we will have an executive session for personal litigation and real estate this evening.
All right. With that, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to adjourn. So I got a motion, Councilman Presser, Second Councilman Stevens. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, there are none, motion is carried. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight.